Servicing the property then would be through carts and other vehicles that we would use to move our services around, but you don't see that backstage. And then finally, as John noted, the existing historic entrance, which is the tree-lined alley, comes off of Mill Road, and that again is intended to be a very limited, no-event traffic in that area. The next area that I just want to touch briefly on is sound and noise impacts. We have an event pavilion. We intend to have events that are gatherings for weddings and other things. And very consciously, we looked at where that should be on the property. It's centrally located where the Stone Barns are, and as John said, we are developing an event pavilion. The intent of that pavilion is any large gatherings or large events that are sound generating would be in there. However, as part of this investigation, we looked at and did a sound analysis that just said, okay, what if we just did an outdoor event and we analyzed using standard sound analysis techniques? What kind of impact would we have on the adjacent properties? Sound dissipates over distance. That's how you evaluate sound and impacts on adjacent properties. We modeled an existing event that would happen in the area of the Stone Barns. We used distance decay to calculate what that sound level increase might be at adjacent properties. And then you also factor in things like existing vegetation, elevation changes, and things like that. That analysis showed that there really will be absolutely no major impacts from sound on adjacent residential properties. The sound levels will fall well below any thresholds that there are in the town regulations or in state and federal DEC regulations. You know, the one thing that we cannot promise obviously with sound is that you won't hear something, but hearing something very low pitched is different than having anything that exceeds threshold. So in this case, what we said is, okay, well, what if you could hear it? What do we do to avoid that? What we do to avoid that is we create our event pavilion, and we orient all of our uses that would have that are sound generating across the residential properties, and therefore to the full extent, any kind of noise impacts. I'm going to very, very quickly go through the next ones and then turn it over to John just to talk about the alternatives that we looked at and close the comments out. I talked before about topography and slope, the fact that our earthwork, you do have earthwork volumes. We will be managing the site. It will be sound engineering for all construction. We have stormwater regulations and other regulations that are in place at the state and local level, and that's the same with soils and geology. We've looked at that. We're avoiding rock outcrop areas. We're not within wetland areas, and we have a clustered development that's around the existing roadway structure. On the water and water supply side, there's actually two sections in the impact statement. One is water and water supply, the other is public utilities. We have met with the village. Our plan right now would be to extend a short section of the village's water main across Route 9 and onto this property to service this. Water comes from the river. There's plenty of water. There's plenty of capacity, and we should be in good shape. In addition, on-site, there are the ponds. We anticipate on the ponds of putting in dry hydrants, which is really just a line that goes down and goes to the pond, and you can pull water out of that if you need to, if you ever had an issue for fire protection. Surface water resources and stormwater management, this is what I was talking about. This covers things like impacts to streams and impacts to wetlands and soil erosion issues. Sound engineering requires that you do stormwater management controls, as I said before, and it really does make sure that we don't have any impacts in this area. Wastewater on this site will also be with a pre-engineered packaged wastewater treatment plant. The outfall from that plant will go to a constructed wetland. Constructed wetlands give you the ability to get a final treatment on it. It flows to an intermittent stream, which means that that plant has to be designed. New York State DEC's and Department of Health's highest level of treatment, which is a tertiary treatment, and so we've made sure that we mitigate anything that has to do with wastewater. Terrestrial and aquatic resources. Bagnon Environmental has did all of our analysis in this. They did all of our wetlands investigations, threatened endangered species, and our design, as I said before, is very, very sensitive to the existing landscape. We preserve a lot of existing open space, and the conclusions from the study are that we will be fine in this, and we will not have a significant impact on wildlife. Historic and cultural resources is kind of a given. We're going to be adaptively reusing historic structures, so I won't get into that, but you know, again, trying to keep that character and not lose those resources. Land use and zoning, again, we're trying to be 100% compliant with country and two standards. We believe that our application really does meet the measure of that, and therefore no impacts from that. Visual character, again, we want to make sure that the historic structures are first and foremost in our design. All the other structures that are associated with that will be subservient to it, some learn character, high quality, and really everything on the Grassmere property is internally focused, so there won't be a lot of, you will not see this actually from the exterior, but even if you did, we anticipate that it will be a very beautiful development. I talked a little bit about utilities before. This is just a reiteration of the fact that we do have adequate capacity from the municipal water supply source. And then finally, on community services, we spent a lot of time working with emergency services and fire department just to make sure that whatever layout we did on the existing roadways would be adequate for fire protection, fire apparatus, and we also met with those bodies to make sure that they had adequate capacity to service our facility. And then finally, there was the LWRP section, and Jonathan's already touched base on that. So with that, I'm going to turn it back over to John to talk about the alternatives. Should point out that whenever you do an impact statement, you have to first look at the no-action alternative and just...
Thanks, John. So yeah, as part of the secret review, we looked at the no-action alternatives, and without this type of an adaptive reuse development, then the site would obviously remain as-is. It opens up the question, though, what would happen to it? Right now, the Grassmere building really needs a lot of work, and it's at a point where if that doesn't happen, the sort of future for the property is a big unknown. Whether somebody would ever come in and spend the kind of money that it would take to really fix up that house and live that way is very much of a question. So what would happen with the Manor House in particular? I'm not sure. The next piece is what would happen with the remainder of the land. As I said earlier, we bought the land because we didn't want to see it subdivided. We wanted to keep those open fields intact and available as open space and preserve that view shed. If this, something like this doesn't happen, we certainly can't guarantee what the future of that land would be. And then also, it would not have a lot of the benefits that we believe that the project is bringing to the community in terms of the increase in tourism, in terms of the increase in money flowing through the community, in terms of the employment on the project itself, and in terms of the tax revenue that this is going to bring to the town. We also, under the secret process, looked at a few, well, not just under the secret process, we looked exhaustively at site plans over the last probably six years, a number of which we explored in a good deal of detail. This is one that we developed pretty significantly, and this, a lot of the, the same goals were reflected throughout. It was just different ways of trying to get there. So in a lot of, in a lot of ways, the big challenge with this site is how do you add the volume to make it economically viable without stepping all over the qualities of the property that make it special? The Manor House is a big building, but it's a big house. It's not a big commercial building. If you were going to go back and do this all today, you'd make that Manor House four times the size it is right now and really let it command that space. But we needed to work in this construct in a way that we felt that kept the Manor House front and center. This attempted to do it really by trying to make a lot of the volume go away. These were guest rooms that were actually built into the slope here, guest rooms that were built into the slope here, with the idea that by doing this, it would not require the extra volume up top. The challenge with this, of course, is that you're asking your guests to go below ground, which is sort of a questionable proposition. The other piece of this is that a lot of volume was put around the upper ponds, and to add this kind of volume around the upper ponds would have required creating a foundation that ran all around this area. So the impact on these trees and this slope here would have been much, much more significant than what we're talking about with the eco cabins. And as we got into that, we realized that there needed to be a better way to do this. One of the other things that came up is that one of the fun things about going to a hotel is going to a place that has a sort of center and a life to it. And without adding more volume around here, you don't quite have that central focal point for the hotel experience. And this comes into play also in this next one. This is another development scheme that we looked at, and this one, we, same thing. How do you keep this residential scale intact? In this concept, we really did the opposite in a lot of ways of what we did in the earlier one, and we tried to spread it out. So we were looking more at standalone cabins that, in this case, this is the field here. We were looking at adding a water feature down here and then using that water feature as the focal point for a guest cabin development area that was going to go around here. There were the eco cabins up top, some additional cabins in here. We actually had looked at adding some cabin structures out in this area as well. The problem with, and down here actually, and also, the problem with this is it started to feel like sprawl, and in a similar way to what I was speaking about earlier, even more so, it lacked that sort of center core, which provides the sort of life and energy of a hotel. So it felt sort of too disparate. So what we did is we came back and said, there's got to be more around here, and we've got to create that vitality, but we've got to do it still in a way that's respectful of the situation. Through this process, we arrived at the spot that we're at today. The next is the growth-inducing aspects of the property, and in this case, really, the growth-inducing aspects are positive. They're economic. The property and the project are going to add to the town's tax base, they're going to add to employment, and they're going to, most importantly, bring money into the community that's going to be spent throughout the community. Increasing spending on local businesses will translate to increased spending throughout the community. It's that multiplier effect that I was talking about, and that's got to start someplace. So local farmers need to have support from, I mean, that's how it can work up here, where people get supported through money that's coming in from outside, and for people to get to enjoy some of the assets that we've got, but also spend the money to help support this local economy. In terms of the, the only piece that's outside of that is the water system, which we would tap into from the town. That would go across or go by an adjacent property that's being used as a farm property, the cornfields that are on Route 9. That is just going to be used for farming purposes. Even were it to be subdivided, it would be a maximum of three houses that could be put on that property under the 10-acre zoning. Our water system could be tapped into for those three houses, but that's the extent of it. So there's not a big impact in terms of extending the infrastructure. Finally, in closing, these are the property attributes and really what we're trying to try and to achieve in a lot of ways through the property. The first is really to rehabilitate and preserve the historic structures on the site, and this kind of adaptive reuse program is really key to doing that. The second is the preservation of open space and the historic view sheds, reestablishing the artisanal farm operation, which is a process that we've started and would be building on over time. The next is to create a site plan that was environmentally driven, both in terms of the site placement and the building program. The next is to open the Stone Barns as a restaurant that can be enjoyed by the community. We're really looking forward to people being able to come into the Stone Barns and enjoy that spot. It's going to be a lot of fun. And then finally, promoting regional tourism and spending, guest spending in the community, job creation, and as I was saying earlier, the multiplier effect with the dollars spent on the local businesses. That's it.
Do you have a wrap-up? That's your wrap-up? All righty. Well, first of all, this is the public hearing on the DGIS and the special use permit. First, I'd like to ask members of the planning board if you have questions for the applicant. Okay, I'd like to open it up to the public. What I'm going to ask you to do is come up to the microphone, identify yourself, so that we have it for the record. All the comments that you're making now, particularly as they pertain to the DGIS, are going to have to be responded to in the final that we're going to be putting together. So we really need your name if you're speaking to that issue and what you're talking about so that we can make sure we do a thorough job of covering everything that's brought to our attention.
As the first speaker's come up, Michael, we, the plan we should acknowledge for the record that there are certain written communications that have been received. They're being placed in the record. If anyone wants to read or repeat that communication this evening, they're certainly willing to do so. But for the record, to make sure that you know what the board has received, the board has received a letter from one of the neighbors, Beverly Kane, a letter from Jennifer Hammond on behalf of the Rhinebeck Science Foundation, a letter from the Preservation League of New York State, J.D. Lorenzo President, a letter from Pat McLaughlin of 190 Mill Road, a communication from Michael Edinger, which is dated January 2nd of 1998 regarding a previously proposed project, which also references the Grassmere property, and a letter from New York State Office of Parks and Recreation regarding some additional information if they're going to want down the road for historic preservation, for historic certification purposes. As of this point, and somewhat not surprisingly, none of the other involved agencies have yet submitted their written comments. We typically see that those come in the last, the last days of the comment period. And just for everyone's information, there are perhaps 10 or 12 other agencies at the county, state, and federal level, maybe not federal, but county and state level, and the village, that do have approving authority, approving or permitting authority with respect to these, this project, and their comments, like public comments, will be addressed in the final environmental impact statement.
And copies of the DGIS have been left at the Morton Library, the Starr Library, and they also here at Town Hall if anyone wants to read them. They are available for public review.
And through a link on the town website, the entire DGIS is electronically available.
Yes.
Good evening. Sally Mazzarella. Interesting that tonight we had an opportunity to hear about two of Rhinebeck's important historic properties with a lot of commonality. This is an exciting time for Rhinebeck, but I'm here to talk about Grassmere and Steve and Jonathan. I am so pleased that you reached this point. This has been going on for a long time, and this is an incredible project. And Jonathan, I commend you for a comprehensive and really outstanding presentation tonight. There are about a handful of large historic properties in the town of Rhinebeck that have the potential to cause a significant negative impact on our community, if not developed with sensitivity and in an appropriate manner. Grassmere is one of those premier properties. Over 500 acres of extraordinary landscape, amazing view sheds, open space, significant historic structures, forested lands, wetlands, and agricultural lands. There are so many unique and special features, and what a gift, the revitalization and adaptive reuse of the historic Grassmere Mansion and its extraordinary Stone Barns. Just think, they will be standing strong and viable for at least another 100 years or more. There is so much to protect, and yes, so much to lose. This project demonstrates that one can wed the development of a site this extraordinary while protecting its precious resources. This proposal will pay homage to the historic integrity of Grassmere and the important role it plays as one of Rhinebeck's major estate properties. This project will have a significant impact on the economic well-being of our community. Those individuals that will visit Grassmere will spend lots of money here. They will shop in our local stores, use our banks, enjoy the Upstate Theater and the Performing Arts Center, visit our Pick Your Own Farms, visit our art galleries, which support our local artists, eat in our restaurants, and then return home to share their story of that small historic town 90 miles north of New York City, and then others will come. We will not have to build new schools, hire more police, or build new roads. Yes, tourism is the economic engine for our community, and this project will help to create new jobs and promote smart growth initiatives. This project will enhance and expand the Northern Dutch's tourism industry. I wish the Menches much success and encourage the planning board to expedite approvals so this wonderful project could commence and achieve fruition. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Mary Kay Verba, Executive Director of Dutchess County Tourism. I would like to convey my strong support for the proposed lodging facility at Grassmere Farm Hotel Development. This important project will advance the county's economic development priorities by creating new jobs and drawing increased tourism dollars to the area. Dutchess County Tourism just received the results of a comprehensive year-long research study on the Dutchess County as a travel destination. As part of the study, Young Strategies conducted an extensive lodging market analysis, as well as a marketing conversion and a visitor profile study for Dutchess County, which shows that there is a tremendous need for increased accommodations in Northern Dutchess. Almost 88% of all lodging properties in Dutchess are located in the lower-left quadrant of the county, south of Hyde Park, and yet Rhinebeck and Red Hook are the number two and five, primary destinations respectively for travelers. The limited supply of lodging rooms in Northern Dutchess forces visitors to find accommodations in areas outside the county. This causes a serious drain of revenues with the loss of bed tax that would have been collected had our visitors stayed in Dutchess County. There is also a loss when you consider that the day tripper spent an average of $294 per visit, while overnight visitors spend closer to $716 per visit. The Dutchess County Destination Research also shows that there is a great demand among visitors for upscale accommodations like those being proposed at the Grassmere Farm Development. I have just returned from World Travel Mart in London, where I've met with several tour operators whose clients spend an average of $12,000 to $14,000 for a seven-to-10-day trip. They are looking for unique experiences, and it's my understanding that this development would help us meet their needs and bring them here to visit Dutchess County. Dutchess County Tourism is focused on growing the travel industry in our county to provide long-term, sustainable jobs and economic growth. I hope that you will seriously consider approving this project, which will enhance the visitor's experience and aid Dutchess County in our economic recovery. I think this project is what we need. There's a lack of upscale lodging in Dutchess County overall, and with that lack, as I said, there's an economic drain on revenues that we could all appreciate here in Dutchess County. So I do hope that you will pass this as soon as possible, and I thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. And needless to say, we'll be shooting for number one on that list of destinations.
Hi, good evening. I'm Colleen Crookshank with the Rhinebeck Area Chamber of Commerce, and I'm also a village resident. I really just want to reiterate and back up what John has said in his presentation and what Mary Kay said as well. I have the pleasure of answering the telephone and personally speaking with tour operators and people trying to come and visit our area and spend hours trying to help them find accommodations. It's something that we need. It's something that people want. They want an experience. They want to see the history. They want to experience the agritourism, and this just meets all of those requirements. So I really hope that this is something that we're going to see to fruition as soon as possible. And from an economic standpoint, you know, the merchants, when they have a good day and the restaurateurs, and on any given day in Rhinebeck, you can see the merchants in the restaurants and vice versa. Anytime I walk around and visit the businesses, everybody's in each other's businesses, spending money and helping each other out. So it's true that the trickle-down is a fact. It works here, and we really, really need it, and the tourism is the driving force for that. So thank you for your time and your consideration.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Evening, Warren Smith with Hudson River Heritage. Hudson River Heritage has followed the evolution of the current owner's plans for Grassmere with great interest and finds much to support in the current iteration. The cost of simply maintaining, let alone restoring such a structure as Grassmere boggles the mind. Steve Mensch reported receiving estimates in excess of $900 a square foot when he priced the work sometime after he purchased the parcel that includes the main house. And indeed, it is hard to conceive of any use which could justify that expense in terms of potential return on investment. Their preservation of significant parcels of open space and view shed, as well as significant historic structures, is a key focus of Hudson River Heritage, joined in this by numerous other preservation-minded organizations in the Hudson Valley. The opportunity to achieve both of these goals through one project, which can also bolster the local economy by enhancing heritage tourism and agritourism, is an exciting prospect. The large tracts of adjacent woodland and open land acquired by the owners both preserve at the context of the Manor House and make possible their vision of a farm-to-table restaurant operation in the restored Stone Barn and proposed ancillary structures. The Hudson Valley and Rhinebeck in particular has become a destination for weddings, conferences, and weekend getaways. The dearth of quality lodging options in sufficient quantity to serve this market is a frequent refrain from visitors and those involved in promoting tourism, as we've already heard this evening. A modestly scaled hotel with a spa, fine restaurant, and a variety of lodging options makes perfect sense, not only as a fit for adaptive reuse of this exceptional property and as a viable means to preserve and restore the main house, barns, and landscape, but it's a complement for all our area already has to offer. A use that will maintain public access to the property and create more jobs represents but two additional benefits to the proposal before you. In summary, Hudson River Heritage finds that the current plan is carefully considered and that the clustering of the proposed development preserves most of the open space while providing the density and hence the economic basis to make the project possible. We encourage the planning board to work with the owners to realize this project to the benefit of our entire community.
Thank you, Warren.
Good evening. I'm Jen Hamood from the Rhinebeck Science Foundation. I'm also a resident of Rhinebeck, New York. I submitted a letter, and I just wanted to take the opportunity to read it to you this evening. I'm writing this letter in support of the proposed Grassmere Farm Hotel project. Since 2009, the Mensch family has donated Grassmere and the Stone Barns each year to the Rhinebeck Science Foundation as a site of our annual gala, the proceeds of which are used to enhance the Rhinebeck Central School District's curriculum for grades K through 12. Working with Rhinebeck teachers, administrators, and the school board, we use the money raised at the gala, along with private donations and grants, to create and fund programs that use hands-on learning and innovative teaching methods to help students explore their worlds and connect science, math, engineering, and technology to their everyday lives. Because of the gala, I'm at the Grassmere property, helping to set up for the event for several weeks each year. I realize how special the property is and the role that it plays in the town's history. However, while Grassmere is still a spectacular setting for an event like the gala, it's also clear that the scale of the property and the amount of work required to rehabilitate and maintain it makes it no longer realistic to think of it being used as a private residence. It's a wonderful property and a stunning landscape, but it requires a new life if it is going to be economically viable. This project will do that while keeping the spirit of the property intact. In addition, in hosting the gala, I've been told by many Rhinebeck residents, including people born and raised in Rhinebeck, that they had never been on the Grassmere property and experienced the magical view of the sun setting over the open hayfields. The proposed hotel project and the public restaurant in the Stone Barns will allow the property to be experienced by visitors and by town residents. It will be an economic asset for the town and a place that we can all enjoy and be proud of. I urge the planning board to approve this project as proposed and look forward to it becoming a reality. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Art just reminded me, of those of you who had read comments, if you could just get a copy of Joanie in the back there, just to make sure we all have it in the record, do we can accurately replicate anything we might have to have. Who else would care to speak? Michael?
Hi, I'm Michael DeCola. My wife and I own a property that I think is probably on Sally's top-five list. And so a lot of people have talked about the benefits of this project, and I agree with all of them. I wanted to communicate some of the feelings I have about I wanted to communicate some of the feelings I have about how lucky we are. Not that Steve just assembled this land, which is a huge undertaking, and to preserve the buildings, another enormous undertaking. But what John has done, and what you've seen is the work that he's done, to consider how to make a property like this work past the twenty-five-year generational cycle that we've seen happen on all these properties in our town. Usually, there's someone who's really excited and sees the value of this area and the land and assembles property and passes it on to their descendants or a not-for-profit or an institution that then is saddled with the costs of stewardship, which are astounding. So, and John and I have talked about this for years now, there's been a number of bourbons spilled in this discussion of how do you take something that we see as so valuable and make it work past this generational folly of a single ownership? And I can't tell you how significant that is for our town and for this piece of property. It is a really amazing thing to figure out how to make it work and to do it in a way that preserves so much of what is valuable in this non-economic way that attracts people to the land or to want to own the land if they're able to. So that's what I wanted to talk about today. I mean, we've spent years at the comprehensive plan meetings and the zoning meetings here and honing this vision for the pieces of the town that we are responsible for. And I just want to commend you, you've done a fantastic job in thinking about it in such a long view, and we're all really lucky for having had him done that. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. Anyone else? Yes.
I'm a resident of the town, and I have three things. One, as a resident, I couldn't be more pleased that this is happening in our historic district. But two, and also reiterating, I'm a frequent lecturer to heritage tourism groups who come to the area, museums from around the world, around the country. If the Beakman Arms is booked, there aren't really options. We recently had a group from South Carolina, we had to stay in Beacon, although we were coming up to this part of the river every day. There is a critical need for this, and I speak sort of from the ground and the turf. I was also with a group of trustees and donors from the Preservation League of New York. They were up here in July, they wrote a letter of support. We heard, they asked if I'd read it into the record. They couldn't have been more excited. This is a group that looks region-wide. Over and over again, these trustees, these donors, were saying, "We need this in the region." And they wrote quite a supportive letter to the Town Planning Board regarding the Grasmere Farm Hotel Development. On July 13 of this year, staff and trustees of the Preservation League of New York State had the opportunity to tour the Grasmere Estate in Rhinebeck and hear about the development plans that would include the restoration and reuse of the historic manor house and stone barns, along with the preservation of important aspects of locations' landscapes. Our reaction on hearing these preliminary plans was one of delight and support for what we see as a project that has the potential to provide valuable new heritage tourism opportunities for travelers while breathing new life into one of the Hudson Valley's most important historic estates. The Preservation League is New York State's statewide, non-for-profit historic preservation advocate. We believe that reinvesting in our historic buildings and landscapes is one of the best ways we know to create the places that New Yorkers want to live in and work in and that others want to visit and enjoy. As proposed, this project is truly leveraging the preservation of historic resources to stimulate private reinvestment and economic activity, protect open space, and save a special and meaningful place in New York State. More and more, those seeking to protect historic buildings are realizing that preservation of the structure itself is not enough. What these property needs is a useful role in the future where they can contribute to the local economy by capitalizing on what makes them special and unique. The preservation and reuse of the manor house and stone barns at Grasmere does this by envisioning them as the foundation of a boutique hotel, spa, and restaurant facility located within their beautiful rural setting. We are particularly encouraged by the plans to utilize the federal and New York State rehabilitation tax credit programs, which will provide much-needed capital for the project and ensure that the buildings are thoughtfully protected while enabling their productive use. As you are well aware, heritage tourism is a critical part of the New York State economy, and nowhere is that more important than in the beautiful Hudson Valley. From a statewide perspective, we feel that this project has the potential to become an indispensable part of all of our regional efforts to maintain the valley as a world-class tourism destination, whose centerpiece will be restored, the restored main house, barns, and landscape at Grasmere. I understand that your role includes assessing many aspects of the project before you beyond the historic preservation of the existing buildings, but I hope you will give that preservation high value as you deliberate the merits of the entire project. At the league, we hope it can move forward to the next stage of development. Sincerely, J.D. Lorenzo, President, Preservation League. Thank you.
Thank you. Who else would care to say something? Yes.
Good evening, my name is Robert Donaldson. I'm a resident of Mill Road, and before I begin, I would like to compliment Jonathan Mensch for all your efforts at preserving the natural beauty and the historical charm of the Grasmere Estate. And I really do wish you, you know, success with your commercial venture. However, I'm extremely concerned with the impact the proposed guest entrance would have on Mill Road, not only for the people who use this road daily for driving and recreational purposes, but also for the impact such a permit would have on the scenic roads and the other rural roads in this town. Now, I have prepared an extensive response to this report, and I'll give copies to the members. Inside the report, it has photographs and all the quotes that I'll be using this evening are footnoted. And there are pictures that I've taken that will be used to show the different sites that I'll be mentioning. It is my request that the planning board review the information in this response and deny that part of the special permit use application for the use of Mill Road as an entry-to and egress-from the Grasmere Farm Country Inn, except for family members, emergency responders, law enforcement, and as an emergency exit. Now, according to the traffic impact study, there will be three-site entrances from the Grasmere Farm Inn. The main guest entrance, number one, will be at Mill Road, about nine-hundred feet off Route Nine. Entrance number two, off Route Nine for employee traffic. Entrance number three, about two-thirds of a mile south of entrance number two, will serve day visitors to the restaurant and special events and other facilities there. Regarding the existing conditions at the Mill Road entrance, as stated in the traffic impact study, the speed limit on Mill Road approaching the Grasmere entrance from the north is thirty miles an hour. However, there is no mention of any traffic control signs when turning onto Mill Road from Route Nine. The report fails to mention the traffic control signs south of the Grasmere entrance with a stated speed of thirty-five miles per hour. The report mentions that the recorded speed in the eighty-fifth percentile of vehicles approaching the Grasmere entrance from the south is forty-two miles per hour, while the speed of cars coming from Route Nine intersection along a roadway where there are no traffic control sign is forty-one miles per hour. Therefore, while approaching the Grasmere entrance on Mill Road from either direction, there are vehicles in violation of the speed limits. Additionally, the report states in its conclusion that, and I quote, "Site distances at the driveway pose no significant concern," and that the traffic generated by the proposed Grasmere Farm development will have a minimal impact on traffic within the study area, end quote. I disagree with this conclusion. There exists a foreseeable dangerous situation for cars approaching the Grasmere entrance from the north where there is a bend in the road, a condition that prevents drivers from seeing oncoming vehicles approaching the Grasmere entrance from the south. Vehicles approaching from this northerly direction must cross Mill Road, turning left into oncoming lane at a bend in the road where it's difficult to see oncoming traffic in the opposite lane unless a driver slows down when approaching this entrance. Vehicles exiting the Grasmere grounds onto Mill Road could easily proceed out through the entrance pillars, not realizing they are entering a road with oncoming traffic traveling north and thus failing to yield to such vehicles. Now, in the past three years, I've experienced a number of occasions where I had to hit the brakes to avoid hitting cars leaving the grounds as well as making that turn entering the grounds, and this happened a lot at the time when the Chelsea Clinton wedding took place, where they held receptions at that facility. Now, there's a liability issue that could be involved. Regarding the Mill Road entrance, number one, the report states, and I quote, "Existing traffic volumes on Mill Road are very low, so little to no conflict will be experienced by turning vehicles at this location. At the Grasmere entrance site on Mill Road, the existing conditions require drivers to be mentally aware of oncoming vehicles on Mill Road and exiting traffic at the Grasmere entrance." Now, there exists a liability issue that could involve the town in a lawsuit by allowing a potentially dangerous intersection such as the Grasmere entrance, number one. Now, in 2007, there was a civil suit over in Ulster County, and the name of the case is Russo versus Theo Falacos and the Town of Lloyd. In that case, a driver of a car was injured on a rural road in the town at an intersection that the town knew about but had done nothing to correct it. The victim, now plaintiff in the case, sued the driver of the other car, but also sued the Town of Lloyd. Town of Lloyd appealed, motioned to have the case dismissed in the Ulster County Supreme Court. The presiding judge denied that application, so ordering that the case moved to trial based on the fact that the town knew that this condition existed. The town, you know, then appealed to the appellate division of the Supreme Court, and the appellate division in the Russo case upheld the Supreme Court judge's decision over in Kingston. In that appellate division decision, the court ruled that the fact issue as to whether the road was reasonably safe for travelers precluded summary judgment for the municipality, and driver's familiarity with the intersection did not negate possibility that the municipality's actions were the proximate cause of the accident. Granting a special use permit allowing the entrance, number one, of the Grasmere Farm for entry and egress onto Mill Road when a known foreseeable dangerous condition exists could result in the town being held liable as a co-defendant in a civil suit if someone were to be injured. Now, of course, if the town does grant, the planning board does grant this permit, and God forbid, there is an accident, all right, the town could be sued as a co-defendant. And the town would probably go down to Duchess County Supreme Court and move that the case be dismissed. If it's dismissed or not, it will go up through the appellate division, it could even go all the way up to the New York State Court of Appeals, but I know one thing for certain, it's a win-win for the attorneys, especially the town attorney, and the number of hours that he will bill this town, all right, for all the legal services provided. Over a couple of years it would take place for all of this to transpire, and all of those bills will be a burden to the taxpayers of this community. Now, regarding the Route Nine and Mill Road, Mill Street intersections, this is a dangerous intersection with free-flow traffic coming in both directions along Route Nine and traffic entering Route Nine in either direction from both Mill Road and Mill Street. The report states that the speed limit on Route Nine is forty miles per hour. It further states that the recorded eighty-fifth percentile for vehicle traffic approaching from the south was fifty-six miles an hour, and the recorded speed for traffic leaving the village and approaching the Mill Road intersection from the north was forty-nine miles per hour. However, when approaching Mill Road, Mill Street intersection, all right, from both directions on Route Nine, the speed limit is thirty miles an hour, and therefore, there are vehicles approaching this intersection that are moving at a speed in violation of the posted speed limits. The report does not go into detail as to the fact that the entrance from Mill Street onto Route Nine, north and south, or across Route Nine onto Mill Road is not directly across from the Mill Road side. In fact, approaching the Mill Road stop sign from the south, the Mill Street approach is at a forty-five-degree angle east-northeast of the Mill Road side. This angular situation on Mill Road creates a problem for both Mill Road and Mill Street drivers as to who has the right of way to proceed north or south or across Route Nine, as well as watching for oncoming traffic proceeding north and south on that same route. Additionally, when two or three cars are stopped on Mill Road at the Route Nine intersection, the wait can be long. There certainly would be a conflict with existing conditions when the traffic from the hotel guests would be exiting the grounds, creating a large backup on Mill Road at that Route Nine intersection. The situation could become a major traffic obstacle during the county fair and during other events like the October Sheep and Wolf Festival, where traffic can be backed up on Route Nine as far as the Hobson store and beyond. There is no mention of an existing danger, the blind spot created by a curb in the cemetery wall looking north when approaching the intersection at Route Nine and Mill Road. Should a vehicle approaching this intersection stop a few feet before the stop line, the driver might miss seeing a car proceeding south on Route Nine due to a blind spot created by a curb in that cemetery wall. The traffic impact study ends with a comment that the traffic generated by the proposed Grasmere Farm development, and I quote, "will have a minimal impact on traffic within the study area," end quote. Now, there are a number of roads throughout the town designated as scenic roads by the New York State Department of Environmental Conservation. In 1980s, the Rhinebeck Town Board determined that sixteen roads should be named as official scenic roads for the town, Mill Road being one of those roads designated as a scenic road both by the town and the DEC. A complete listing of all of those roads is attached to the end of your report. Now, in the Rhinebeck Comprehensive Plan, it states, "Town roads such as Mill Road provide for multiple uses and are one of the most underappreciated areas for social interaction within the community. Town roads also double as areas of recreation and alternative transportation in addition to community interaction and residential access. Residents regularly walk, stroll, hike, bicycle, and run on these town roads. Aside from the daily vehicle usage, Mill Road is used regularly by walkers, joggers, and bicyclists, and is also used as a route for running marathons and bicycle events. Any increased vehicle traffic on Mill Road could seriously disrupt as well as endanger the residents and visitors who walk, jog, and bicycle on this road." It is stated in the GEIS outline that the Grasmere property will be designed, and I quote, "mimimize vehicle usage on the property to encourage a more relaxed pedestrian guest-friendly environment," end quote. On the other hand, the preservation of an existing relaxed pedestrian environment on Mill Road would better serve the needs of all the people, residents, visitors, and guests. Back in December 1998, two residents of Mill Road protested the application being presented to the planning board, opposing the use of the Grasmere estate as a reception and special events facility. In a printed appeal delivered to the residents of Mill Road, the opponents to the Grasmere development stated the following, and I quote, "In our opinion, and as other communities have found, the proposed Grasmere facility would seriously undermine the quiet rural character of Mill Road, create a very unpleasant noise problem for neighbors, and make the already difficult intersection of Mill Road and Route Nine into a major headache for all of us who come and go that way." A copy of that original flyer is attached to page sixteen of your outline. Now, there's a precedent issue. Granting a special use permit allowing entry-to and egress-from the Grasmere Farm using Mill Road would set a precedent allowing for a similar special use permit for other persons wishing to use their property, whether on Mill Road or other town rural roads for similar commercial purposes. Additionally, granting such a special use permit could be used to facilitate a request for usage of another entryway to the Grasmere estate. That private roadway entrance, Daz Lane, is located immediately north of the Van Steenberg Mill Bridge on Mill Road. Although the GEIS outline does state that hotel guests using the Mill Road entrance would proceed down a lane to a parking area and from there be brought to the hotel by a shuttle bus, this original plan or intention is not necessarily permanent and could be changed by a number of reasons. Investors in this project would deem it necessary to have not only hotel guests, but guests for other special events functions use that Mill Road entrance. An insurance carrier could mandate that the Mill Road entrance be utilized for vehicle entry and egress for special events and other functions for the initial coverage or for the renewable policy coverage. Should Mr. Mensch ever... Should Mr. Mench ever divest himself from this project, a new owner would be able to expand the Mill Road entrance to accommodate vehicle traffic for additional use of the grounds and the facilities. Granting that special permit for use of Mill Road entrance would go against what the people who prepared the town comprehensive plan had as a vision for preserving the rural character of Rhinebeck's rural roads. According to the vision statement of the Rhinebeck Comprehensive Plan regarding traffic and transportation, and I quote, "It is the goal to ensure that all new development is pedestrian-friendly." Regarding resident usage, the comprehensive plan stated that "transportation, especially walking and bicycling, is clearly an important concern for the residents, but 91% believing that town roads should be designed and maintained so that pedestrians and bicyclists can safely use them," end quote. More importantly, the comprehensive plan clearly states that, quote, "One of the visions of the comprehensive plan is to encourage tourism at a scale which respects the town's historic and rural character, making visitors feel welcome, respecting the primary needs of the residents year-round. Preserving the rural character of Mill Road by denying this part of the special permit application would be upholding the vision and goals of the town comprehensive plan." Conclusion. At the July Planning Board meeting, Mr. Mench spoke about the property development plan. When he described the proposed entrance number three on Route 9, he stated that visitors would experience a nice drive through wooded areas and looking at the stone barns, and then he said that the unexpected view was really neat. Well, therefore, I ask that all the visitors and the guests of the Grasmere facility experience those really neat views by using entrance number three on Route 9 and not the Mill Road entrance. Denying a special permit allowing for entry and egress at the Mill Road entrance except for reasons that I stated earlier would generate a number of positive factors, among them, it would maintain the current pedestrian-friendly atmosphere of Mill Road for walkers, joggers, bicyclists, and residents year-round. It would protect the existing wildlife habitats and provide valuable wildlife corridors. An example on Mill Road would be the amphibian and terrapin crossing north and south of the Van Steenberg Mill Bridge. It would protect the environment by preventing an increase in both noise and air pollution through increased vehicle usage. It would allow family members and friends visiting those buried in the town cemetery a peaceful moment without interruption from vehicle traffic proceeding along the Grasmere driveway to and from the hotel or other facilities on the ground. It would prevent a foreseeable dangerous entry and exit from the Grasmere farms at the Mill Road entrance. It would save the town costly legal fees from a possible lawsuit due to an accident at the proposed Mill Road entrance. It would deny investors, insurance carrier, or any future owners of the property the opportunity to expand the Mill Road entrance for vehicle entry and egress for other activities on estate grounds. It would prevent vehicle congestion and heightened dangers for cars entering or crossing Route 9 at the Mill Road and Mill Street intersections. And lastly, it would save all the designated scenic roads along with the remaining rural roads in this town from similar detrimental effects. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else would like to speak?
Hi, my name is Frank Mazzarella. I'm an architect, recently returned to the area. Actually, I was not prepared to speak tonight, but just listening to Jonathan's proposal that just brought to mind a few things I wanted to share. I've been very happy to be able to have seen the project develop over maybe the past 10 years ago, I guess, once I first saw Steve's model of the site plan. And although it's changed over time, it even has improved, I think there's an underlying philosophy which a lot of us agree with here, and that's the kind of the respect for the land and the landscape and the way that the buildings are integrated into the natural setting. I think the other thing that is to be commended is not only the fact that they're restoring the historic structure, but also the way that the whole development has a kind of progressive and kind of undertone which is, you know, about the way we live today, not only how to make the project viable, but how the restoration of a historic structure is kind of totally compatible with building something that is of this time, and it would allow it to continue to be successful in the future. So, we look towards that with optimism, not only restoring an old structure, we're talking about the past, but also looking forward. The other thing in viewing the site plan, I think, a lot of times when we see a site plan, we're looking at some lines on a piece of paper or some colors, and sometimes it requires kind of a leap of faith to understand how that project might be developed. How do we go from site plan to developing architecture in terms of the materials and the details? So, I think it, any of you who've seen what Steve has done from 25 years ago along the mill are very, I guess, as assured as I am, and those of you who haven't, that the way that the architecture follows through with the same level of kind of respect and detail throughout the project. The other thing I'd like to say is a, my wife, who recently moved here from Europe, we've suffered a little bit of the frustration that some of the other people have mentioned in finding accommodation here in Rhinebeck, people who come from Europe for the first time, who want to, you know, are very impressed with the Hudson Valley but are unable to really find the right type of accommodations. So, that's something that we've also experienced, and I think this would help in that respect as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Frank.
Michael, I have a couple.
Oh, okay. Anyone else from the public?
Hi, my name is Annie Marvin. I don't have a prepared statement. I do want to commend the mentions on the beautiful project. I just would like to advise the board to hire the appropriate experts to study the traffic. I am a resident of Mill Street, and I do think the project is beautiful and all, but I would like to just point out, it's 110 rooms, it's a 125-seat hotel, it's an event room with maybe 500 people leaving at the same time, arriving at the same time. It is a spa, probably one-hour appointments. We all know Haven Spa, how busy that's in, in and out, people for a one-hour manicure, et cetera. It's a farmer's market, which is people in and out. It's operations, delivery, garbage, towels, linens, and its employees, and I really want to preserve the buildings. I think the value of the project is phenomenal, but I do run on Mill Road, I see the bikers, I see the beauty of that road, and it is on a bike path, et cetera, and I just do think that we need to look in very good detail about the traffic from a, at the time of the event's end, and have experts that can really advise us. So, in 20 years, we have beautiful buildings, but then we also have, you know, maybe an issue with traffic lights on two spots on Route 9, and that is a very tricky intersection on Mill Street and Mill Road and at the Hobson's Corner, so I do think it's important to look at that. Thank you.
Thank you. Sharon, you had some questions?
Yeah, I had a couple, I have a couple of questions, a couple of comments. There's, you have the hotel and 100 guest rooms for which you want the primary entrance on Mill Road, and for the guests, for the guest rooms in the hotel.
The guest access.
Yes.
The primary entrance off of Route 9.
But for the hotel, the primary entrance is.
The guests, but there's more traffic actually for the hotels.
Right, but the primary entrance for the hotel and the rooms you want on Mill Road. And that's 100, yes, that's 100 rooms. You could conceivably have 100 cars coming in on a Saturday or a Sunday. Also, I asked this once before, but how much road frontage is there on Mill Road?
I do not know off the top of my head. I'd hate to give you a wrong number, but if I were to guess, it's easily over 50 feet from the hotel to the van. Do you like my answer? Couple of, couple of.
Okay, I'd like to get that number. The other thing is, you mentioned that, you know, it's pedestrian-oriented, and it's sort of a mile easy access to the village. Would make more sense to keep the Mill Road access as it originally was as a carriage road, and just keep that as a pedestrian entrance, pedestrians and bicycles for people to go to the village and use the Acro hook road or the Route 9 further down as the main Another point, when we were there on Saturday, when we were in the Stone Barn, as you're giving the presentation, all I could see was the cars going up and down Route 9. I could hear them and I could see them, the sun shining off every one of them as they were going up past Route 9. So, that's something you might want to consider as putting in some more trees as a buffer so the people at the Stone Barns don't have to experience the noise and the sun shining off the vehicles. And like, two more questions. Where will the tertiary plant be? Was that on the map?
Yeah, the location would be down below the Stone Barns, off towards where the main tributary is that goes down to the kiln. The exact location will be worked out as part of site plan.
Just a general idea, wasn't.
Because that's where everything drains at, which is naturally rapid draining.
Okay, and I had one more question. Oh, Grasmere sits on about 25 acres, and then, but you're talking about this 250-acre set-aside. What's to ever present, I mean, nobody knows what's going to happen five years, 10 years, 15 years. The Grasmere is only on 25 acres, and then you get this approval for the hotel and everything. It's supposed to be on 250 acres. You could easily sell that 25-acre Grasmere property, and you've still got the other property. The set-aside, what's that mean? It's just a set-aside on another piece of property. It's not, it may be adjoining, might be the same owner, but it's not, the country hotel is supposed to be on a 250-acre lot minimum, and it's only on 25 acres.
I think you misunderstand what's meant by that.
I'd like the explanation of the set-aside.
There are 250 acres that are associated with this application.
Right.
And that 250 acres is encumbered by this application permanently forever. So, you could not, for example, sell all the 25 acres at a demand on a job. That would be a violation of the approval from this board. So, the 250 acres is attached to this application and becomes a permanent part of it.
It'll be part of the site plan, the final site plan, and once it's stamped and signed, then it cannot be altered without the special use permit being surrendered and that use of the property being discontinued if you were to choose to do that sort of a thing.
Yeah. Actually, the 250 acres will be encumbered as part of the special permit, by the special permit buttressed by the site plan, and conceivably will be the subject of a subdivision which might include the extinguishing of the 25-acre lot line that you referred to. So, the set-aside is a generic term that's being employed here for what is really likely to be a formal subdivision and a parcelization of the 525 acres into a 250-acre piece dedicated to this project, and 275 that's going to remain in agricultural use. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. I think that's it.
Oh, okay. Thanks, Sharon. Yes.
I'm Cliff Schubert. I've lived in this area since 1975 or so, so like many of you who have lived here for a long time, you've seen what it's like to deal with Rhinebeck traffic. And I'd like you to do a little bit of visualizing as I describe something in a moment. I'd like you to think about how is the traffic supposed to be managed, the northbound traffic entering into the main entrance of this facility? Picture it, if I understood all the things correctly, the entrance is somewhere along what we commonly call the four lanes, is that true?
I believe so, yes.
Okay, so you know that we have lots of events in Rhinebeck, a lot of tourists travel, a lot of events at the fairgrounds, we have the fairgrounds itself, thousands and thousands of cars during certain times. Well, visualize people going northbound on the four lanes, and they would like to enter the main entrance of this facility, and you have this heavy southbound traffic during rush hours twice a day, even in the afternoons during the week, especially on Friday afternoons, the traffic increases quite a bit. Well, how is the traffic going to be managed when you're entering the main facility, main entrance? If you're going northbound, you have the two lanes northbound, it's like a four-lane highway there, then there's a median in the center, and a lot of the southbound traffic. How is that supposed to be managed? I don't have the answer, but has anybody thought of that?
Thank you. Anyone else? Members of the planning board? What we'll be doing tonight is closing the public hearing on the DGIS, not on the special use permit. Comments on the DGIS will still be taken until December 2nd. Once that's complete, once that period is hit, then every comment given from tonight's, all the written comments, anything we continue to get, needs to be analyzed and answered as the town planning board prepares the final GEIS and its findings statement. So, if there are any other questions or any other concerns anyone has, or you have friends or neighbors have any other concerns, anything like that, please have them get them to us by December 2nd, and they will be read, seen, and they will be answered in those final documents. So, anyone else want to say anything tonight on the DGIS? The special use permit public hearing will be continued, that will not be closed tonight.
In this matter will be continued, there will be a discussion, there will be discussion of this matter on the December 16th planning board meeting agenda. That discussion at that time will essentially be the planning board's review of the comments that have been received on the DGIS, discussion of the public comments that were heard this evening, and discussion of the comments that are received from other agencies and other members of the public between now and December 2nd. Importantly, I think, with respect to the traffic issues that have been raised this evening, it should be recognized that the DGIS is already in the hands of two of the other involved agencies for review and comment, those two being the Town Highway Superintendent and New York State DOT, those being parties with jurisdiction over Mill Road and Route 9 respectively. The DGIS is also in the hands of the planning board engineer, Ray Jerkowski of Morris Associates, for technical review between now and December 2nd. Once the planning board reviews comments that will likely be forthcoming from all of those parties, the planning board is still empowered to request on a particular issue such as traffic, an independent review perhaps by a traffic, another traffic consultant to look at the comments that have been made by those parties or to further analyze the work that's been done by GPI and its other consultants on the traffic question. So, there's no question about the fact that all these matters have to be carefully, you know, all comments have to be carefully considered by the planning board before the FGEIS is developed and ultimately the findings statement. And quite clearly, there were a lot of issues raised this evening with respect to traffic by Mr. Donaldson that need to be carefully evaluated.
With that said, anyone, anything else I'd like to say tonight?
Motion to close the public hearing.
I'd like a motion to close the public hearing on the DGIS.
And continue the public hearing on the special use permit to an indefinite date to be determined upon completion of the secret process.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion of that? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, very good. We have one more item on our agenda for this evening.
You've got three more items.
We do?
Yeah.
Oh, we have to do those, yeah, but.
You have two applications and disposition of the, initial disposition petition.
Oh, right.
See, it's two approval items. Oh, you have three, you have four items on the agenda, and the park.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, good Lord, okay. The next item on the agenda, the Thomas Thompson Sally Mazzarella Park, New York State Route 308 West. What?
That's done.
No, that's done.
Oh, okay.
That's done.
That's, that's, that requested, that's been put on. Okay. Thomas Thompson Sally Mazzarella Park, New York State Route 308 West, applications for special use permits, site plan review, and approval and wetland permits, review and discussion of status of applications within the purview of the town planning board and consideration of requirement for additional information, further coordination with village planning board, and/or authorization of preparation of draft resolution. I guess the question we have tonight is, I think the one thing that was still outstanding was the stormwater pollution prevention plan.
And the list.
And the list.
The breakdown of. The breakdown of, uh, which, uh, which of the proposed Phase 1 improvements are occurring? In the village, exclusively in the village, exclusively in the town, or partly in either jurisdiction, partly in both?
Sure. Rich Messer, Weston Sampson. Um, the stormwater calculations have gone and been completed. They haven't been packaged, but they've been demonstrated on these revised plans for Phase 1. So I'll hand that to you in a moment. And then as far as the list of Phase 1 items, they're on one of the plan sheets here and next to it it'll indicate relative to the, being in the village or in the town or both. So that list is included on here as well. So I can hand these out and take a look and discuss it.
And make sure Joni gets a copy. Uh, the other thing I would mention, so that everyone remembers, that, um, it was agreed that since Weston Sampson had been hired by the town to do the engineering for this project, we're not having an independent engineer review this project since the town-hired engineer has already done the project.
I'm sorry, can you run that past me again?
We agreed early on in the process that since the town had hired Weston and Sampson to do the engineering for this project, we would not be having, in this case, Morris review the engineering studies for this project, the engineering submissions for this project. We felt it wasn't essential to have the town pay twice for the engineering from its own employees or its own consultants.
While I agree with that, uh, I don't remember that being brought up at this board. Was it voted on here?
Yes, I believe it was. I remember it quite distinctly, because it was a departure.
It seems very, it seems with something this large to leave one, and no offense intended, but we all make mistakes, I can assure you I do, uh, not to have a second set of eyes on this. It is rather important, it's a lot of money here, but okay.
I would agree.
I'll have to go back and look at my notes.
But it was agreed upon. It is a departure from our normal policy. We always have our own consulting engineer review and the engineering submissions to us. But since in this case, it's a somewhat unique situation where it's the town and the town employing the engineer for it, it was decided that we would not require an independent review of the town's hired engineers by another town-hired engineer. The other departure from it is that under municipal, intermunicipal agreement, the village and town boards directed us to hold joint public hearings on this project, which we did, and those public hearings have been closed. So at this point, what we are trying to do, what the village planning board is doing, is reviewing the applications before us that pertain to our individual municipalities and determining when we are in a position to, uh, ask Art to prepare draft documents for approval. I think at some point, we're also going to want to have either some meeting with the village planning board or at least exchange documents with the, to make sure that the driveway in the town portion meets up with the driveway in the village portion and things of that sort, just to make sure that we have everything synced. But other than that, given the municipal agreement, which is basically what governs how we're reviewing this project, we're at the point now where we look at what's in the town and we see how the three, uh, different elements, the site plan, the special use permit, and the wetland permit, what condition they're in now, are they in a condition for us to ask Art to draft a, uh, a resolution of approval for those three different elements? So you might perhaps want to take us through what you gave us for the, um-
Yeah, Sharon, this, um, set of plans, I mean, we're in a little bit of unique conditions here because we're trying to provide the details, um, for the whole park and that's what's included in the package. But more specific, we're looking to get the Phase 1, uh, specifically approved so our construction. So what you have in this package is, on the front page, you'll see the, um, dark lettering is sheets that are part of Phase 1 and, and the lighter, um, grayed out, uh, sheets are the ones that are part of the following phases. So that's one place to start and reference from. One, um, you, you indicated, uh, you know, about the Phase 1 components, as you go to sheet C4, those are listed, um, there as well on the right-hand side indicate if it's, uh, in the town or the village or both. The letters are on the right-hand side. And also, um, on that, the Phase 1 components are clouded to show what we've been talking about for a number of meetings regarding the site entrance and the first 650 feet being built out and a new access over to the library. Uh, shows some of the, um, parking, as some of the parking's gonna be lost with the entrance, new entrance to the library, so they're showing new, um, parking locations to replace those. It, there's also, um, stormwater components that are indicated on, further on plans C8, uh, 9, and 10. Those stormwater components, again, are for the full build-out, but we have the Phase 1 separated as, um, the first initial components of the stormwater. And that leads down to the, um, two utilities that have to get down to the proposed pavilion, which are the water line, which is a temporary two-inch water line, and also the electric that will be coming from an existing transformer by the pool and going down to a new transformer pad down by the pavilion. So that's shown, as well as, um, the stor, um, the, uh, septic tank and sanitary system that's proposed as part of this part of, uh, phase of the work. And that is all being done through Weston and Sampson and our engineering is, uh, coupled with Frank Mazarella's, um, pavilion design, which he's presenting, uh, separately. So, as you look through here, again, um, the stormwater is, uh, like I indicated on C8, uh, 9, and, uh, into 10, and I'm sure if it's continues down, continues to 11, um, which shows you again all the stormwater for the synthetic field and, and how that all's gonna intertie together eventually. So I think that provides a quick overview. Any comment from the committee, or?
Thank you. Uh, Frank, did you have anything you wanted to add? I know that we've seen the elevations, we've seen, you know, color descriptions, things of that sort, but we are, but we ask for, in terms of design-
No, there is no, have been no modifications to, to the plans since they were last submitted.
Okay.
Uh, tomorrow, I will be delivering to the conservation advisory board a report, uh, explaining, uh, different sustainable aspects of the project and, uh, this more in-depth explanation, description of the materials, et cetera.
At which point, I guess they'll be doing their, uh, consistency review.
Yeah, that was the last.
Okay. And I know there was some question about with the wetland permit, uh, portions of the trail going closer than 100 feet to neighboring properties. I spoke with John Lyons about that. The planning board has authority to waive, uh, special permit conditions, uh, the only exception being any condition that would be considered an area or bulk regulation. In his opinion, this is not an area or bulk regulation, therefore the planning board has the authority to waive that requirement. We have to give findings as to why we feel that waiver is justified before we, uh, do the final approval for either the wetland permit or the, well, for the wetland permit. But we do have the authority to do that, according to our attorney.
Yeah. Well, this is not a bulk schedule.
Right, and it's not, in his opinion.
No, it isn't. Nope, that's correct.
I believe at this point, we're, we have what we required, we have the information we need, we have what we're waiting for, the list and the final, uh, engineering report for the stormwater. Is there anything else anyone else was looking for today?
The only question I would have, and it may be not relevant to this meeting, but I, I'm concerned about the two-inch pipe that you're gonna put in the ground. 600 feet, 800, whatever the number is.
1150.
You gotta, you gotta dig a hole, you gotta put the pipe in. What's the only difference between putting two-inch and eight-inch is the cost of the eight-inch material versus the two-inch material? What is the cost breakout per foot?
The, the temporary line is, is not gonna be dug the full depth, um, for a water line because it's gonna be blown out. That's why it's called the temporary line, so that in the wintertime, it's gonna have to be, um, drained. And so it's only for a short window of time until the pavilion gets built, then shortly after that, and it's all about the timing of funding, et cetera, where the new, the eight-inch line that's in 650 feet will be continued, it'll be set up to be changed out, and then the, uh, the line would be installed to the full depth.
Seems like such a duplication of resource.
It's quite a bit cheaper, um, because the idea of the two-inch line being rolled HDPE with like a ditch witch installation, where you're gonna be digging and installing pipe readily, you know, in a quick manner, because there's no other connections, um, can be done quickly, uh, quite a bit less of a cost. Again-
Just for my own edification, could somebody come up with a round number? I'm not looking for pennies, nickels, and dimes.
We did have one on there.
You talk tens of thousands of dollars delta, or are we talking hundreds of dollars delta? I, I understand eight-inch pipe and, and two-inch pipe, there's a big difference in cost.
Yeah, the, the inst, the depth, what's the, the depth of the two-inch? Three foot for the two-inch and typically four and a half type top of pipe for the eight-inch. So you're gonna be digging-
So we're, we're, eventually the eight-inch is gonna go in.
Correct.
So this is just a-
Temporary.
It's a, it's an over-cost, but we're doing it because it's cheaper and it's a way to get in.
Correct, because of the existing-
Just making sure that's, I mean, it's not savings, it's a temporary installation to prevent us from putting in what we will absolutely have to put in down the road.
Correct.
Okay. And we, do we have a number on that?
The number on the-
The installation of the two-inch pipe?
Yes, I don't have it right here readily, but we have estimated all the components.
As compared to the eight-inch.
Yes, we've done that too.
Because, you know, cost versus benefit, I mean, I think we all as, as homeowners and business people like to look at our costs and say, you know, maybe, you know, maybe we do part of it, maybe we get a little closer, it's gotta be done anyway. And one of our big emphasis, I think in the beginning, was to try not to redo our efforts, if I'm not mistaken.
Agreed. The, the approach was based upon figuring out the amount of work that could be done for the available budget and grant monies that were in hand. And that tied into the requirements for the pavilion, having bathrooms installed as part of that grant. So we worked with the committee to come up with the best approach possible to use the existing budget to get the pavilion, um, completed, at least a portion of it, as part of the grants available. So that's how this design came about. Again, it's, it's driven by the budgets and the grants that are in hand. And the committee could speak more to it if they'd like, um, on the details. Bob, Bob will speak a little more to that.
It's totally an additional cost. It's totally an additional cost.
Um, originally, when we, when the whole design was, I was the one that was requested that we put an eight-inch over a six-inch hydrant going all the way back, 'cause I felt it was, uh, a need for adequate water in case it was ever a problem. Uh, it would give good water flow for the fire department if they needed to hook into a, hook into the hydrant back there. When it came down to the cost of doing this, we came to, we came to find out that it was very expensive to continue the eight-inch hydrant all the way down to the pavilion as such. So we kind of, uh, came to, uh, an intermediate stage and, uh, we decided to bring the eight-inch down to a certain point and then continue down with the two-inch to give water to the pavilion so that the pavilion could be constructed and, uh, the bathrooms could be used as such. Our, our purpose is that eventually we will continue the eight-inch hydrant, eight-inch main, all the way down to the pavilion and then there will be a hydrant down there. But it came down to a cost factor. We had to weigh the cost and the cost was extremely high to continue the eight-inch all the way down. Uh, I know Weston and Sampson has the cost of continuing it down and the cost of the two-inch, so they can, I'm sure they can send that to the board for their, for their information.
That would be good, that would be good.
Well, you can, if you stay right there just for one second, the cost became an issue along, I mean, we had a Phase 1, we had a Phase 1, but considering financial limitations on the part of the town, we, Phase 1 has been greatly scaled back. My question is this, and this is brought up, I think, by Michael in the very beginning, just a simple matter of fiscal responsibility to have some kind of a, to, to sit here at this point in the game, ready to, uh, dig the, take the first shovel full of dirt, we don't have numbers. Uh, how much is it gonna cost? I mean, I don't even believe, I believe the estimate on the, the pavilion was $320,000 unfinished for Phase 1. My question is this, is there a cap on this budget? Do we, is it an open check right now?
No, we put a cap on it. We did put a cap on it.
So why did the pavilion go up and the infrastructure get temporary?
Because part of the money that was for the pavilion is being from an outside source. Uh, so it was, it was taken-
Dutchess County block grant?
Right.
Yeah, but that's been part of the planned expenditure all along, all along, so-
But as, as anything, uh, and I, you asked me this question before.
And I heard it, you said, because it changed. And my question was, again, is there a cap on the budget or could this turn into a $600,000 pavilion?
No, it's not gonna turn into, it's, there's a cap on the budget. In fact, we worked with Weston and Sampson and they have all the figures for what things are gonna cost and we went through it to make sure we cut and did what we could to make sure we stayed within a, uh, a set amount of money. And they have all the cost figures, so they can give them to you.
I think that's great. I just think that this board should probably see that there's a good, solid plan in place. I mean, it's been a large amount of considerations.
Yes, we can provide that, we can provide that to you.
I don't know if we need the financials, I don't think that's our responsibility. I'm more interested in just what, what the delta is.
Okay.
I, my own-
I would like it, Bob, thank you.
Send him to him.
Okay.
Any other questions? Anything else that we need that we don't have? I think what I'd like to do is have a motion to ask Art to prepare for our next meeting, uh, resolutions approving the wetland permit, the, uh, special use permit, and the, uh, site plan for Phase 1. I think what we're gonna need is, um, I think that Woody wanted to see the cost differential between the two-inch and the eight-inch, just as a matter of course. I think Richard wants to see the financials for it, and I think that he's certainly entitled-
I feel like I just got the, the, the stormwater drainage tonight, right?
Yeah, the, the detailed layout, the-
And so, no one's interested in looking at this before you tell Art to go prepare approval for Phase 1?
A pair of draft, draft documents, which we either approve or don't approve.
All right, fine.
I mean, you have a whole month, you have a month to read it.
I just flipped through and I see there's drainage, is, is dumping everything into an existing playground right next to the pool. Is that-
No, that's not correct.
Is that a playground or is not?
There's three, no, there's three different locations where drainage ends up to.
Right, there's two, but one of them dumps right next to the pool into an existing, very heavily utilized, that brings revenue into the town area.
Right.
No, uh, it's a, a grass area, uh-
That's where they have summer camp, yeah.
Beyond the, um, I think pavilion, you know, the existing outdoor, um, uh, yeah, like it's pool pavilion, I guess it's called.
Michael, do, will, our engineer will be reviewing this anyway, right?
No, they won't.
Whoa, 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 no they won't.
No, they won't.
This is it.
That's what was agreed upon.
That's why I'm asking these questions, and I think it's appropriate.
It was agreed upon that since Weston Sampson had been hired by the town to do the engineering for the park project, that we would not then also have Morris review as well.
The one thing that we need to provide to you is the final calculation package for all the stormwater, which has been done, but hasn't been packaged.
Eventually, ultimately, because if you see the, uh, sweat and, uh, permit.
Yeah. Conditions of the final stamping and signing of the site plan will be DEC's approval of the stormwater pollution prevention plan, as well as the Dutchess County Health Department's approval of the Sue's disposal system for the pavilion. So, there will be other people looking at these things.
Correct.
So having said that, could I hear a motion to approve, asking Art to create those draft resolutions of approval?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Opposed.
So Art will put those together and we will see you at our next meeting.
Thank you.
Okay, we have a few things to go back to. One thing which I don't think it, if not on the agenda-
You're probably gonna direct just a report, be prepared, draft report.
Right.
Members have received copies, right?
I don't know if everyone had to receive a copy of this. I know I have a copy of it. This is the, um, resolution accepting the zoning amendment for John- This is the resolution accepting the zoning amendment for John McGuire.
John put copies in your, in your packet?
You all have it?
No.
It was sent by email.
It was emailed out, yes, it was emailed to everybody.
Yeah, it was by email.
Okay, so you've all seen it. Basically, what it is, is it's taking the overlay district, similar to the one that's of it, Sopasko Village, and it's overlaying the area where John's property lies, there are 39 properties there, most are around one acre, and there are two roughly around five acres. And basically, what this does is it, and it's in a five-acre zone now, basically, what the overlay would do is it would bring this district down to basically the area and bulk regulations of the RM1 district, and it would allow further subdivision of these two properties. This was the one with John that we were on the cusp of approving before the new zoning law went into effect back in 2009, and then the town board acted very quickly and approved the new zoning law before we got done with this. So that's what this is for. Basically, it's a recommendation to the town board whether or not we believe this is a worthwhile thing to do.
See, what the planning board's obligation is, is to produce the required report, as specifically spelled out, content of which is specifically spelled out in the zoning law. You'll recall that earlier this year, the board produced and transmitted to the town board a similar, this type of report in the case of the core group rezoning, core group zoning amendment. This involves only a zoning map amendment, there are no, as I understand it at this point, there are no zoning text amendments, changes in the use schedule or anything of that sort proposed. The zoning map amendment is to really utilize at this location the same overlay district that is in place, was put in place under the zoning for the Sopasko Village area, which also was marked by small, small existing lots, primarily small existing lots that were not in keeping with the, the new RC, RC5 district, district standard.
What it would do is it would restrict uses to the extent that things that are allowed in the RC5 district would no longer be allowed, a number of them in this district, things that require five acres or more.
And you commented that Mr. McGuire, a number of years ago, had a application for subdivision pending before the, before the planning board. This was basically at the time that the, just before the new zoning regulation went into, new zoning, 2009 zoning regulation went into effect. There was another issue at that point in time, also present.
Right.
The issue was that, at that point in time, he was talking about not only creating residential lots from a portion of his property, but maintaining his contractor's yard there. And his contractor's yard had an acreage requirement associated with it that precluded the possibility of creating those residential lots.
The contractor's yard is not there anymore.
It will be, it will be discontinued.
Right, it will be discontinued. So the circumstances have changed, what was actually proposed back in 2008, early 2009, would not have been approvable at that point in time, even under the old zoning, if he were to, if he had decided at that point in time that he could not forego the.
Contractor's yard. So what I'd like to do is ask Art to draft a report to the town board that we can then
Consider.
Consider at our next meeting. Once the town board receives the recommendations from the CAB, where the CAB and the planning board, they will then be in a position, if they so choose, to introduce a local law, which will be an amendment to the zoning law, creating this overlay district for this particular piece of property, declaring themselves lead agency under Seeker, and basically doing what they did for the core group rezoning.
If that draft is authorized, it'll be in your hands at least a week and probably closer to two weeks before the, before your meeting, so you can, you can consider a comment, et cetera, before it becomes an item here at the, at the table.
Right.
Do you need a motion?
Yes, please.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion?
A question. What, what's, how big is the piece of property we're talking about, the overlay?
It's actually, it actually encompasses that, that neighborhood, that has about 39, 39 parcels, and I'm going to guess, just looking at it, those 39 parcels probably total 70 acres, 80 acres, something about 70.
And how much of that, the primary reason for this is to make it look like it conforms? I mean, it's pre-existing, existing non-conforming lots right now, right?
The RC5 zoning did two things. It made, I believe, 37 of the, 35 of the 37 existing developed parcels non-complying in some particular fashion, as well as rendering the two larger parcels that exist in that area unsubdividable. So the proposal here is to place the overlay on that particular neighborhood, on those 39 parcels, in which case, I think, just about all of the existing development would become not only existing, would, would move from existing non-conforming to, in fact, complying status. Larger issue being, in some cases, setbacks rather than, than lot area, and would also make it possible for Mr. McGuire, who is the petitioner, to subdivide his five or six-acre parcel, and for potentially the other owner, whoever owns the other larger parcel, to, to subdivide if, if that was their desire.
Which is convenient, so you don't have to come and do all these variances and everything. What stops the next landowner and the next piece down in the river from saying, I'd like an overlay here for 10 acres, only 5 acres?
They can apply for it, and if they can justify it, they can. The other thing this will do is it will eliminate.
We don't open ourselves up, though, I mean, this is a big deal.
There would have to be, there would have to be a new vehicle created under the zoning law, too, because, again, this, this is applying a vehicle that already exists, the neighborhood infill overlay as it exists in Sopasko, is being, is being applied to this new location. The situation you described, if somebody were to petition for this in the HP20 or the RC10, or the RA10, or whatever, they would be creating a new overlay district, establishing a new overlay district within the zoning law.
The other thing it does is it restricts the uses within this district, which are allowed in the five-acre district, but were not allowed in the one-acre district.
What kind of things disappear on this?
Contractors yards, certain commercial uses, which probably aren't, you know, really desirable in, you know, a close-knit area such as this.
Farmers market, I would guess, and, you know.
If you go down through the use table, you can see what's allowed in the RM1 district, that's what would be allowed in this district as far as uses are concerned. A motion, a second, any other comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. And we had two other, I think, for both Mench and Imperato, we had two.
Resolutions.
Approval resolutions, we did the Seeker. Do I have to read them? Melody asked me, in a beseeching voice. We have Mench, and then we have Imperato. So should I read them?
You probably should, because Imperato's, Imperato, we think Mench first?
Yeah, Mench is first.
Okay. Mench's resolution is straightforward, other than the requirement for the provision of a consolidation or merger deed.
Okay.
Other than that, the conditions are straightforward, conditions that.
Okay. Well, let me just zip right through it then, hopefully. The Town of Ryanbeck Planning Board hereby acts as follows on the September 25, 2013 application by Stephen and Pamela Mench for subdivision plat approval, review and approval in a matter of proposed lot-line alterations totaling 7.32 acres and affecting tax parcel numbers given in the Rural Agricultural RA10 District, the Hudson River National Historic Landmarks District, and the local waterfront revitalization area. All is depicted on a survey map entitled Amendment to Filed Maps, Lot Line Alteration, prepared by Marie T. Welsh, LS, and dated September 25, 2013, and otherwise described in the application and supporting information, the proposed action subject of a negative declaration determination of nonsignificance heretofore issued by the planning board. One, finds as noted upon review by the town's Waterfront Advisory Committee and considered prior to the issuance of the aforementioned negative declaration, the proposed lot-line alterations to be consistent with pertinent coastal policies set forth within the town's LWRP. Two, approves the application for subdivision plat approval and authorizes the chairman to stamp and sign the subdivision plat upon the applicant's satisfaction each of the below conditions and/or requirements within the 180 calendar days of the planning board's adoption of this resolution. A, submission of subdivision plat drawings in the number and form specified within Town Code, Chapter 101, including thereon, both all required stamp, seal, certification set forth in the Chapter 101, and notation as required under New York State Ag and Markets Law pertaining to the relationship of the property shown on the subdivision plat to lands within a certified agricultural district and the related preference afforded agricultural activities. B, stamping the subdivision plat in the form required above is a non-jurisdictional subdivision or for filing purposes only by the Dutchess County Health Department. C, submission for review by the planning board as to sufficiency and subsequent recording in the Dutchess County Clerk's Office simultaneously with the filing of the approved subdivision plat draft of a consolidation or merger deed whereby each of the annexation parcels will be combined with the parcel to which it is being annexed, thus obviating what otherwise would be the creation of non-complying parcels. D, payment of any outstanding fees or reimbursable amounts due to the Town of Ryanbeck with respect to the submission, review, and processing of this application under Town Code, Chapter 101, the town's fee schedule and related executed escrow agreement. Could I hear a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? I'll poll the board. Woody?
Aye.
Sharon?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Richard?
Aye.
Jesse?
Aye.
Melody?
Aye.
And I will vote aye. Moving right along.
On Mr. Imperato's, the draft resolution concerning Mr. Imperato's application, two things. One is, paragraph one deals with a finding that the board has to make in terms of authorizing a flag lot, that it's basically an acceptable thing to do, that there's a practical means to address a, to address a situation, so that's dealt with in paragraph one. Paragraph two includes among its conditions a number of additional items that need to be addressed before the plat can be stamped, signed by the chair. That is the approval in writing by the Town Highway Superintendent of the access point, submission of a statement from a licensed professional engineer concerning the suitability for septic arrangements on the, on the site, and the depiction of the, the building line, the front building line, in accordance with the requirements of the extraordinary requirements of the zoning law as related to a flag lot. So all of those are included in the, in the draft resolution.
All righty, well, here we go. The Town of Ryanbeck Planning Board hereby acts on the September 26, 2013 application by John Imperato personally and on behalf of Frank and Kathleen Robusto for subdivision plat approval, review and approval under Town Code, Chapter 101, subdivision of land to authorize a proposed lot-line alteration between lands of John Imperato and lands of Frank and Kathleen Robusto, and the subsequent subdivision of the modified, excuse me, lands of Imperato into a 5.987 acre flag lot with a minimum required 40-foot, a feet of frontage and a 92.113 acre remaining lands parcel on Hilltop Road in the rural countryside RC5 district, all is depicted and/or otherwise described in the application and supporting information, including a survey map entitled Minor Subdivision and Lot Line Realignment for Lands of Imperato and Robusto, prepared by Robert L. Campbell, LS, and dated September 9, 2013, and both a short EAF Part One and agricultural data statements signed by Mr. Imperato, the proposed action subject of a negative declaration determination of nonsignificance heretofore issued by the planning board. One, finds due to the limited roadway frontage of the 98-plus acres, lands of Imperato, the authorization of the 5.987 acre flag lot to be practical means, to be a practical means for Mr. Imperato to create a single additional lot from his landholding without incurring the expense of extending Hilltop Road for a substantial distance into his property. Two, approves the application for subdivision plat approval and authorizes the chairman to stamp and sign the subdivision plat upon the applicant's satisfaction of each of the below conditions and/or requirements within 180 calendar days of the planning board's adoption of this resolution. A, approval in writing by the Town Highway Superintendent of a proposed individual residential driveway access location on Hilltop Road within the 40-feet frontage of the 5.987 acre flag lot. B, submission of a statement in writing from a licensed professional engineer stating forth his or her opinion based upon field investigation that a suitable location is present on the 5.987 acre lot for the design and installation of a sanitary sewage disposal system supporting not less than a three-bedroom dwelling in accordance with the standards administered by the Dutchess County Health Department. C, depiction on the subdivision plat of a front building line for the 5.987 acre flag lot located in accordance with the minimum lot width and setback requirements set forth in Section 125-30B3 of Town Code, Chapter 125 zoning. D, submission of subdivision plat drawings in the number and form specified within Town Code, Chapter 101, including thereon, one, the approved driveway access location in the above cited front building line for the 5.987 acre lot, two, notation as required under New York State Ag and Markets Law pertaining to the relationship of the property shown on the subdivision plat to land within a certified agricultural district and the related preference afforded agricultural activities, and three, all stamps, seals, and certifications required within Chapter 101. E, stamping of the subdivision plat in the form required above is non-jurisdictional subdivision or for filing purposes only by the Dutchess County Health Department. F, submission for review by the planning board as to sufficiency and subsequent recording in the Dutchess County Clerk's Office simultaneously with the filing of the approved subdivision plat draft of a consolidation or merger deeds whereby each of the annexed parcels, subject of the lot-line alteration between the lands of Imperato and the lands of Robusto, will be combined with a parcel to which it is being annexed, thus obviating what otherwise would be the creation of a non-complying, of non-complying parcels. G, payment of any outstanding fees or reimbursable amounts due to the Town of Ryanbeck with respect to the submission, review, and processing of this application under Town Code, Chapter 101, the town's fee schedule and related executed escrow agreement. Could I hear a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? I'll poll the board. Bob?
Aye.
Richard?
Aye.
Jesse?
Aye.
Melody?
Aye.
Woody?
Aye.
Sharon?
Aye.
And I will vote aye. I believe we can leave to rights entertainment.
Okay, so I think you're ready for Woody.
Woody? Do I hear a second?
Adjourned.
We stand adjourned at, good heavens, we could have gone two more minutes, we'd hit 10 even, at 9:58. And I thank you all very much for your attendance. Oh, wait, yep, right, don't anyone say anything.